So you can hear me, I'm sure. Um, we'll start with the roll call tonight Suzanne.
Thank you. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Carr is absent. May, um, Councilmember Matthews?
Present.
Councilmember Sonnier is absent. Councilmember Sawyer?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. If you will all join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, we are going to, number three on your agenda and 3A, we have Carol Akarius coming to speak to us about the Greater Woodland Park Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Welcome Carol and whoever's with you, if you'll both just give us your name and your home address before you get started and we'll go from there.
I am Carol Akarius, I'm the executive director.
Excuse me Carol, there's a microphone, there you go.
Um, Carol Akarius, executive director for the Coalition for the Upper South Platte. And with me tonight is Michelle Conley, she is our forester. My address is, do you want physical or mail or does it matter?
Physical address.
Um, 86 Lake Drive, Cripple Creek, Colorado. 10770 Thomas Road, Colorado Springs.
Thank you very much ladies.
So Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the chance tonight to present the Greater Woodland Park CWPP for your consideration for concurrence and support of this planning document. Um, first I just want to give you a quick update or history of how we got to where we are. Um, you all do remember that we had a pretty big fire here in 2002 called the Hayman Fire. Following the Hayman Fire, the State Forest Service and US Forest Service helped pull together something called the Front Range Roundtable, which works across the 10 front range counties to try and ramp up efforts to mitigate future forest fires in our region. Um, through that process in 2008, the Front Range Roundtable put out a request to communities up and down the front range to put in a request for proposals to do a community planning and implementation process that would show how we can ramp up work on the private side of the fence and partnership efforts between the land management agencies and citizens. Um, in summer 2008, we were selected to do that process and we began the Woodland Park Healthy Forest Initiative, having our early meetings right in this room. We brought together a whole load of stakeholders, federal, state, local government entities, nonprofits, community members, and we began a planning process that in the next couple of months led to an MOU between the city, the county, CUSP, the Forest Service, State Forest Service, Colorado Springs Utilities, and other entities. This was one of those sort of, we're gonna play nice in the sandbox and sing kumbaya together MOUs. It didn't have a lot of teeth, but it just was a, we want to work together to ramp up these efforts. The initial area identified when we put in the proposal was 41,000 acres right around Woodland Park. In June of 2010, then Mayor Randolph was the first signatory to the new Woodland Park Healthy Forest Initiative CWPP or Community Wildfire Protection Plan. That plan covered a 60,000 area around Woodland Park. So it went out as far west as 67 going down to Cripple Creek, as far north as the Douglas County Line. Um, in that, we committed to do at least 20% of the acres in that 60,000 acres, so at least 12,000, but we had a goal for the Forest Service of a little over 13,000 acres and a goal for CUSP and the State Forest Service, working on private lands to complete at least 3,000. We actually exceeded those implementable goals. So a couple of years ago, we started talking, I think Ms. Riley was at the first meeting about, okay, we've done this stuff identified in that initial plan that was signed off on in 2010, where do we go from here? There's still a lot of work to be done. And so we began the process of pulling together a Greater Woodland Park Healthy Forest Initiative. And the next, yep, there we go. And so this map shows us the original boundaries, which is in black, and then we have the, um, the pink boundary, which is the, um, expanded area. So as Carol said, we've expanded it by approximately, um, two-thirds. The original is about a third of what we've expanded it to. This map is also showing in green, those are the areas that, um, CUSP has done treatment in partnership with other agencies such as Colorado Springs Utilities, Colorado State Forest Service, as well as private, um, landowners. And then the gray portions indicate areas where the US Forest Service has done treatment. So you can, you can see that there's quite, quite a bit of treatment has been done around the Woodland Park metro area.
Excuse me, before you go forward, could you help us all understand the word "treatment"?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. Treatment means, um, mitigation. So these treatments involve fuel reduction in terms of taking down trees for, um, fire mitigation as well as forest restoration.
Thank you.
Um, this slide is showing us what the CWPP team identified, these are the values at risk. So for instance, we've got life, property, economic losses, utilities, watersheds and water, um, delivery infrastructure, recreation, soil erosion, post-fire erosion, transportation, wildlife habitat, historical sites, and then just the regular biology, plants, animals in the natural setting. So there are a lot of values at risk. So that's a little bit different, it's the show of the subwatersheds. Sorry, don't have my glasses on. So, on this map, what you will see is the yellow lines, if you can see that. That shows the differentiation between the South Platte drainage and the Arkansas drainage. Whoop, other direction. So, and then, and then these other, the blue lines on here, if you can see those, are some of the subwatersheds. So you notice when we did the original WPHFI plan, we had very square lines, right? But nature is not a square shape, so when we started doing the update, we said, let's look at it from a watershed boundary perspective. And being a watershed group and watershed people, I think that probably makes sense. So we have a few majors of watersheds in this drainage that we cobbled together lines based on those subwatersheds. You'll also notice in this upper left-hand corner of the map, there's a large block of pink that blends over into our perimeter line, that's part of the Hayman Fire scar that's shown up here. So even though that probably doesn't need a lot of treatment in that area, it kind of got treated by Mother Nature, um, we included it in the boundary because we were working off watershed lines. So going from the previous plan to the new plan, the changes are, we've obviously added quite a bit more acreage. We've also got the inclusion of fire-adapted communities, which I'll be going into in a minute, home hardening principles, and then, um, we're focusing on post-fire effects to, in order to prioritize those pre-fire, um, activities. And we've got, um, maps in the, in the document, and, uh, we want to create, what's planned is a, is a shorter version, a more simplified version, for just the average citizen to go through with the most important points on it. Fire-adapted communities is a concept, basically it's proactive as opposed to reactive in terms of fire. Um, and it involves residents within the community understanding what we're talking about in terms of fire risk and fire mitigation. And they create a lifestyle around this, so it means that they're, they're educated around the risk, they have plans in terms of, um, evacuation routes, internal safety zones, if they cannot evacuate safely, must shelter in place, as well as, um, fire, cooperative agreements with fire, um, local fire, prevention education, they're doing fuel reduction activities, they have ready, set, go in place, so all types of things that get them ready to face what's happening in California as we're talking. This is, um, obviously showing, um, a home that has been burned to the ground. When we talk about home hardening, we aren't just talking about the vegetation, mitigating the vegetation, we're also talking about dealing with the structure itself, starting at the roof and working all the way down, um, the building materials, the windows, the vents, um, everything that, that is putting a home at risk during an ember storm from wildfire. So one of the things Michelle mentioned in the list of what's new is this idea of doing pre-fire planning for post-fire flooding. And this is actually so new that to the very best of my knowledge, the Greater Woodland Park CWPP is the first place and the first time this has been done anywhere in the country as part of a CWPP planning process. What we did is we took those subwatersheds and again broke them into even smaller subwatersheds. And it's hard to see on here, but there are a whole lot of subwatersheds that, the biggest one is about 3,500 acres, okay? And we then started to put these subwatersheds through a number of analyses. And I'm not gonna go into the gritty details, if somebody wants to learn more, I would be happy to talk to them in a future date. Needless to say, to explain it in enough detail, we have 45 minutes on your agenda. So, but we used something called Stream Stats from the USGS that evaluated both the two-year flow and the 10-year flow out of these little tiny subwatersheds. These are before-fire flows. So it says in a 10-year return interval rain event, coming out of this watershed, we'd expect these, this many cubic feet per second coming out of the watershed. So this is a great tool for doing that kind of an analysis. And we correlate and go with a certain assumption that if this sub watershed has a higher 10-year flow than that sub watershed, it's probably gonna have a higher 10-year flow after a fire. So this is an assumption, but it's a pretty logical one. Then we pulled against each one of these same subwatersheds, fire intensity information from the Colorado Wildfire Risk Assessment Portal. So this is an online system the Colorado State Forest Service developed, and again, each sub watershed is evaluated for that. Then wildfire risk, how at risk is each one of these subwatersheds compared to the other subwatersheds coming out of CORAP? And finally, we developed a composite risk assessment for those pieces of information. So one sub watershed's likely to have more flow, but is not likely to have as high an intensity fire, whereas another one might have lower flow, but it's gonna have a way higher intensity fire. We put all this data through a regression analysis, so a mathematical equation, that then let us select each one of these subwatersheds and kind of rank each one as to where we expect the biggest post-fire issues. Then, we took all of the subdivisions within the area and we mapped them out according to which subdivisions were within the highest priority subwatersheds, which were in the moderate priority subwatersheds, and which were in the media, or the low, lower. Unfortunately, in our community, there's no low priorities. So we tiered these as tier one, two, and three, but even tier three has a real danger, but it's just less of a danger than these tier one areas. And then we, based on all of that data, crunched it and ranked these sub-basins to say, these are the sub-basins that are the highest priority for future work going forward. That basin ID number one, which is our highest basin of all of them, is down and near the Florissant area, for example. Some of the information that went into how they prioritized in there was, has there been treatment done already or not? What are the, what's the infrastructure, what's the homes that are at risk? And again, what's this post-fire flood risk? So our work is done with grant funding, and obviously grant funding is limited. And we, we want to spread it as best we can, use it in the best places. And so we want to, we want to identify those high-risk areas in order to, to get grant funding and then get work implemented in these areas, um, and it, as well as educating citizens. We're always educating more and more, trying to help people understand that what is happening in California is headed here. And, um, so we want to partner with the city of Woodland Park, with all the fire districts, and, um, Colorado State Utilities, more, more partnering with the, with the State Forest Service. It's going to take all of us together to make, um, this area fire-safe and therefore, um, mitigate, you know. We see these fires, we see the pictures, it's very dramatic. What people don't understand is that, once you have a big area that burns, that's black, it's, it's producing a lot of heat, it is actually creating storms that then dump water on these burns. And people will say, why didn't this happen before the fire? This is the way Mother Nature has designed herself, it happens after the fire. And so the flooding is the biggest impact, it's the most expensive, it, it devastates properties for 15-plus years until they stabilize enough to get vegetation growing again. So, that's the quick and dirty. Again, we would love your concurrence, as I said, in, in 2010, Ben Mayor Randolph was our first signatory to the plan, so we'd love to have Woodland Park again be the first signatory to our new Greater Woodland Park CWPP. Do you have questions or comments or anything you can clarify?
Well, I'm sure, I'll start by saying, thank you. Um, lots of hard work, and I'm just guessing, you know, post-disaster that we had, at least we have some awareness now, that you probably didn't have so much when you first got started with this project. And so you're kind of preaching to the choir. My question is gonna be, um, and I think all council, everybody in this room is concerned and wants to know what we can do to help. So, um, being the first signatory is not gonna be an issue at all. Tell us what else we can do.
I think again, helping with outreach and education to your constituents, helping people understand the risk. One of the problems we see in our mountain communities is that we have a high turnover in people who move, live here for a few years, move out, new people move in. As former Commissioner Ignatius used to say, people move to the mountains and they're so thrilled that they can get rid of their lawnmower, but they don't realize they need to go out and buy themselves a chainsaw. So that messaging that, to new people and to the community, luckily, the, the local paper does a great job, we always have to thank them for their continuing coverage of the issue. But I think that's a really big step for leadership. Um, and I think in the long run, you know, continuing to work with us, with the town and the State Forest Service and all, to mitigate the risks around here. As you said, you know, we all remember running out of gas as Waldo was burning, and we all remember the highway being closed frequently in the post-fire flooding. A lot of the lessons we learned in Hayman, we transferred to Waldo. We literally were able to go into Waldo and bring those recovery lessons that took a long time to learn, they were School of Hard Knocks lessons on Hayman, and to implement them. So actually, we reduce post-fire flooding, may be hard for people to believe, but significantly in Waldo and quickly. So the first year or two, it seemed pretty bad, but it would've been worse had we not been doing this work. This is gonna give us the ability to now even pre-plan where in those watersheds, where are their culverts that we have to talk to Ben about, that, hey, in a fire, this sub watershed's gonna be bad, and you have these culverts that will probably fail. We have ponds that we know if they fail, they make an already bad flood even worse. So we're gonna pre-analyze in those high-priority watersheds, where are some of these ponds that will breach, sadly they always do after a fire, and be kind of ready to go out and work with property owners to say, can we pre-breach before the flood? Because I guarantee you, it's gonna breach during a flood. Um, and we succeeded in convincing a couple of property owners in Waldo to do just that. Your, your water rights will stay for 10 years, and if you're working on trying to restore them, the state engineer's not gonna take them away from you, so, you know, there's no excuse. But that's my, my thing, the more you can help us with the education and outreach, the better.
Sounds good. Could you make sure that Suzanne, or one of the staff, has the contact information that we need in case people do reach out?
Yes.
Because if they ask me, all I'm gonna be able to say is, I know who to call.
And the website is cusp.ws down there, and our emails and our phone number is there as well. Um, and I know that David and Sally both know how to get ahold of us quickly, so.
Great. Counsel, Kenny?
Uh, just, uh, in terms of education, something I think needs to be done is, we have so much national forest around Woodland Park, I think there's some concern and confusion of people who border that, what they can and can't do, maybe what they shouldn't do. I mean, we don't want them out cutting trees in the national forest, but can they trim them up? Can they cut the brush? And what's, what's their limitations? How far back can they go, or can they do nothing?
So sadly, if it hasn't been through NEPA, well now that's the National Environmental Policy Act, the Forest Service cannot give you permission to do that. One of the things we're doing in new planning, and we're starting with the Pike on that side of town, on the Catamount and Pike's Peak side right now, on a new NEPA process, we recently did this in the Palmer Lake area, and we pre-planned through their NEPA process along those kind of borders, where there were places we would want to be able to go in and do good neighbor projects. If we get that cleared, then the Forest Service says, then, if you guys have money or a willing private landowner who wants to do the work and has at least minimal supervision from State Forest Service or CUSP, people can go treat in those areas. But without doing that, you can't. And right now, what Oscar, the forester in the Colorado Springs office, would tell people who called and said, well, I want to do behind my yard, he can't possibly NEPA one neighborhood or one property. I mean, he does not have the manpower, resources. But they are starting to do this sort of bigger, again, sort of landscape planning and looking at that type of work in their process, so that then, moving forward, we'll be able to go out and do those acres.
I hope they can make that easier and not as complicated for people to deal with. Thank you.
They do want to, but they also do have legal requirements upon them.
Any else? Once again, we, we appreciate it, Michelle and Carol, and thanks for all your hard work, and we're here for you if there's anything we can do.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item 3B, talk a little bit more about the Eric Dixon Memorial Project, and Steve Plute is, I believe, gonna lead this. In the holder? Well, yeah. It's the old microphone.
Hi.
Hold on one second, Steve. I think-
38820, County Road 77, George, Colorado.
Now you're, now you're right there. Perfect. Thank you.
And again, thanks for this, the floor and the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight, and I shouldn't be much more, hour, hour and a half. So anyways, if you excuse me while I read my prepared statement. The Eric Dixon Memorial Committee would like to request approval, approval from the council in the city of Woodland Park to place the bronze statue and granite pedestal of Eric Dixon in Memorial Park. In your packet on the first page, let's assume you guys have that packet, is an artist's rendering of the bronze. And it will be a life-size statue, and the pedestal will be approximately four feet across by four feet across, it's gonna be a hexagon, and the total height, including the height of the three-and-a-half-foot pedestal, will be approximately seven feet altogether. As you all probably know by now, the original memorial was eventually tore down due to disrepair, vandalism, and updated plans for Berksstrom Park. All that remains today to the memory of Eric is the small plaque located at the Avenue of Flags. Our desire is to place this bronze statue in Memorial Park is fueled by many factors. First, the land where the Avenue of Flags is located actually belongs to the Colorado Department of Transportation, while Memorial Park belongs to the city of Woodland Park. So if you'll, uh, reference page two and three in your packet. The first email on page two that's highlighted tells you that there's no contract with Woodland Park and CDOT, and that they can't guarantee that the statue won't have to be relocated at some point. The highlights of the second letter rules out Avenue of Flags altogether, in my opinion. And at some point, whether it be tomorrow, or 20 years from now, those existing memorials will have to be moved. And no one, not even the state, can say that two years from now, they might have to do something. I doubt it, but no one knows. Now if you'll turn to page seven. You'll see a recent photo of Eric's 91-year-old mother holding her gold star that she keeps prominently displayed in her house. And turning to the next page, is a letter from Shirley concerning the memorial, and I'm gonna read this entire letter aloud. Says, Dear Woodland Park, it's very hard for me to come up with the words that express my joy at hearing the memorial for my son will be reinstated. When the original memorial fountain was vandalized and eventually removed by the city, it broke my heart. The people of Woodland Park wrote, built that monument to be a lasting tribute to Eric, but it stood for barely 10 years. Now that a new memorial is to be built, I can't think of no better place for it than near our old house by the pond. At that time, we lived on Henrietta Street, only a few houses away from the pond. Our son loved that park and spent many times here while he was growing up. That was his favorite place to take his girlfriend when he was a young teenager. A mother never gets over the loss of a child, and her heart is permanently broken. This memorial to be placed in Memorial Park will never bring Eric back, but it is a great tribute to a young man that gave his life for his town, state, and country. Sincerely. Sheriff Dixon. And, uh, you also have other letters from the family members in the packet, and some of those highlights. There's, and for the audience, this one here is from his brother, this one here is from his sister, and this is from, uh, his widow's daughter, his widow remarried, and this is from her daughter. But they all say the same thing, that's from his cousin. They all say the same thing, and, uh, basically like Eric's brother Donnie said, and this is just one part of it, it says, after almost 50 years since my brother's death in Vietnam, honoring him with bronze, bronze statue brings tears to my eyes. I have heard that one of the possible, possible locations for this memorial would be in Memorial Park, which due to its name is the ideal location in my opinion. About possible locations, Eric's sister says, no doubt that it should be at Memorial Park. There isn't any place in Woodland Park that this memorial should be. Uh, the daughter of Eric's widow, Chris, who died this last February, unfortunately, says, if I may add my opinion based on my mother's stories over the years, if her voice could be heard, she would recommend Memorial Park because of its relationship to Eric. So I hope that council, that you've had the time to read through all the other letters from family members concerning this issue. They all recommend Memorial Park. And then, on page 13 there, most of us know Colorado Senate President Kevin Granham, well he actually visited both Avenue of Flags and Memorial Park, and he sent the letter that you see on page 13. In it, he urges you to place the monument in Memorial Park. On page 14, Norm Steen, who I'm sure you all know also, he wrote a pretty powerful letter in support of the memorial project. He writes that the memorial should be placed where children and young people can regularly see and read the story of Eric Dixon. So I ask you, council, which would be the better spot, Memorial Park or Avenue of Flags to be seen by all these children? Carol Kenny, on the next page, was Woodland Park's mayor at the time of- Carol Kenny, on the next page, was Woodland Park's mayor at the time of Eric's death, and in his letter, you'll see that he also urges counsel to provide Memorial Park for the bronze. And then lastly, you have a letter from Bill Woods, and if you don't know, the Woods family came here in 1930. Bill Woods was actually at the dedication of Memorial Park in 1944. In his memory, it was dedicated to the men of Woodland Park that served in World War II and World War I. That means that the park was made to, made to honor veterans, and I hope this council respects the dedication made by that greatest generation. In closing, just as we are to remember Pearl Harbor today, I urge counsel to please remember Eric Dixon and permit us to use Memorial Park as an internal location to remember the sacrifice of Eric's fallen hero.
Thanks very much, Steve. I think we might have a couple of questions. I don't know if we'll defer to David first and some thoughts, because we, we started this discussion a number of months ago, and, and clearly there were two sides. So David, you want to continue for us?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Steve. This is a tough discussion. I mean, it's an easy discussion to ensure that we continue to honor Eric and his sacrifice and his mother's sacrifice and his widow's sacrifices, we should. The dilemma that I'm faced with is understanding what we've done in Memorial Park and what we've done in Lyons Park. The original location of Eric's statue was not in Memorial Park, it was in Bergstrom Park. I wonder why wasn't it originally placed in Memorial Park? But that was a lot of years ago, and today we're faced with the dilemma of what do we do now? Lyons Park, when we rebuilt it in 2002 to incorporate a memorial to 9/11, it was decided by, at that time by the city manager, that those who claimed Woodland Park is their home or had some connection in Woodland Park that paid the ultimate sacrifice would be honored in Lyons Park. That's why Eric's plaque is still there. We elevated it to a different base, so that it was much more prominent. We put it in the most prominent location within Lyons Park. We added another monument soon thereafter from a man who lost his father in Vietnam. It's an anonymous statue, but they were living here at the time. And then in 2004, I believe, Master Sergeant Richard Lee Ferguson was killed in Iraq, and we, some years later, erected a plaque and a monument there in honor of him. His widow and children still live here in Woodland Park. That was intended to be the place for all future memorials. The, the location of Memorial Park, while certainly draws more people, it's one of the suggestions I made to Steve and to their committee, was let's do two things. Let's, let's put the larger monument in Lyons Park, and let's do some other things in Memorial Park. I suggested that I could suggest to you that we name the large pavilion after him. He had large presence there growing up. He had many historical things in his life that occurred in Memorial Park. And I think we could come up with ways to honor him throughout the park in a multitude of locations, and therefore have a multitude of locations to honor him. Frankly, the, the location that they think could work in Memorial Park could work very well. It's in a location that's on the east side of the park, it's in a small landscaped area. The, the monument would look very nice there. The struggle I have is, what's next? What, what happens with, with the next individual? What, in, part of the argument or discussion that Steve and I had was, well, Eric grew up here, those other people didn't. Well, what if it's the next person that sacrifices their life that was here? Do we put them in Memorial Park? Maybe the answer is yes. Is it in Lyons Park? I'm not sure. I'm, I'm very torn about this, because I, I think that both locations could work very, very well. Counsel, I would really enjoy hearing what your thoughts are. This was not codified, it was not memorialized, it's what the city manager said we should do at that time. And that's what we followed even after his departure, when we honored Master Sergeant Ferguson there in, in Lyons Park.
I appreciate it. Steve?
Yeah, I would like to respond, David, to why it was placed in Bergstrom Park instead of Memorial Park. At that time in 1968, and I lived there then, way through this, at that, Bergstrom Park was the premier location of Woodland Park at that time. Memorial Park, as it was just known as the pond at that time, was just that, it was a pond, and there was a task park, there was nothing there. It was overgrown, it was, it wasn't used much except for a few kids during the summertime, and then I stayed for the wintertime. Bergstrom Park was the ultimate place to give honor to Eric, because it was, had picnic tables there, swings and slides, and it was the hub of activity with the saddle club there at that time. It was the ultimate place, because we wanted it in the, as a former Mispin organization that paid for the original fountain. We wanted it in the most visible place there was in Woodland Park, and at that time it was not Memorial Park, it was Bergstrom Park.
Steve, could I interrupt? Could you hold the microphone, please? I'm sorry, we're broadcasting, and we want everyone to hear your words.
Sorry. And then, concern in Memorial Park, what's next, you ask, and who else should be there? As Bill Woods says, that it was dedicated in, in 1944 to soldiers that fought in our wars. Now are we going to disregard their wishes back in 1944 just because we don't, we weren't there? And we might not know Eric? I, I think it would be unfair to the greatest generation that dedicated that park to the memory of our World War I and World War II veterans and our, our soldiers in whole. So I yield the floor.
Steve, a couple of things, I'll just get right out there. First of all, relative to visibility, I don't think you can argue that visibility at the highway of six, at the intersection of 67 and 24 seems a lot more visible to me than Memorial Park, in my opinion, more people going by. That's just, just my opinion. That said, and, and I think our city manager alluded to this, I'm certainly not going to fall on my sword or get my hair on fire about this. We all want to honor Eric Dixon. I think everybody's clear on that. And we want to do the right thing, not for, just for today, but for the future of our community. And that was one of my concerns too, for the next fallen soldier, and what's it going to look like in the future? But I'm going to support your wishes. Personally, that has nothing to do with the rest of the council, but I will, in attempt to lead, I'm going to support, you've done your homework, you certainly have a, a great argument, if you will, and so I will do everything I can to, to help you get that monument in Memorial Park.
Well, I appreciate, appreciate that very much. But I want to respond to visibility. It's not so much visibility, well, it is, but who's going to see it? When you're driving by 67, you're too involved with the taillights in front of you, and the spruce trees conceal those monuments that exist there now. And if you look at population-wise, or use-wise, I should say, I drive, every time I drive by there, there's no one in that park, except when David puts on his excellent show, by the way. But you go by Memorial Park, anytime since it's been reconstructed, it's bustling with people. So as far as who's going to get to see it, like Norm Steen says, it should be where children and young adults can see it all the time. They're not going to see it at Avenue of Flags. Not that, not that much, maybe once a year for an event. And speaking of events, I don't know this to be true, but the way the motorcycle clubs of veteran groups nowadays travel around to these events for Veterans Day and Memorial Day, et cetera, I wouldn't be surprised if your, Woodland Park is filled with motorcycles of five, 600 for a celebration at Eric's memorial. And Memorial Park, there's no place to park. And there's no restroom facilities if a family wanted to have an outing there on the anniversary of his death. There's, there's no restroom facilities. There's, what is there? I think there's nine public parking places, otherwise they'd have to park in the private parking lots of Gold Hill.
You said memorial, you meant Lyons.
I meant Lyons, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
So anyways.
Good point. Counsel? Carol?
I commend your effort to, to establish a new memorial for, was it Gunnery Sergeant or Private or Lance Corporal Dixon? And I support erecting the monument in Memorial Park because of some of the reasons that you talk about, about the accessibility of Lyons Park, although I think that's turned out to be a very beautiful, beautiful spot. And I do go there and reflect occasionally. But I would ask that we codify how we go forward with accepting new applications for other types of monuments to be erected. I'm not sure how we would do that. Would we do that by resolution? But I, I think we need to address that now. Unfortunately, there will be more of our service members lost in many battles to come. We, we need to address that now so we can prepare for that, unfortunately, but necessary recognition of service.
We can do that.
And one thing that, that really resonates with me is that, is that Mr. Dixon grew up here. And he has those roots from way back, as opposed to Sergeant Ferguson, is it Sergeant?
Master Sergeant.
Master Sergeant Ferguson, who lived here, and I don't know if there's a difference there or not, but it seems to me like there is. So when we do what Carol says, those are some of the things that, that we can consider in moving forward. Who else? Counsel? John?
I also commend your efforts, Mr. Plute, to erect this monument to Woodland Park's fallen hero. I would be curious, I think it'd be a question for you, David, about vacant space in Lyons Park and Memorial Park? And if in fact there are other wars and we have other heroes, then could they more easily be placed in Memorial Park than Lyons Park now? Physical space? I don't have any idea how many acres are at Lyons Park.
Less than one.
Less than one, alright.
Surely the, the space in Memorial Park is much larger, there's no question. When we did the design for Lyons Park, we anticipated that there could, could be five or six, maybe even eight more memorials, because there is the, the long sidewalk that runs through the park, just opposite the side of the flags. The Memorial Park is a very active park and very active space. There's a lot of open green, very intentionally, so that we would have grass for kids to play in. There's plenty of space, I think, in both locations. We would always want to be careful in where we sited them, to make sure that it didn't have a negative impact on the other uses of the park. Although Memorial Park is significant, probably three or four times larger than Lyons Park, I would suggest that the, the available space for monuments of this magnitude are probably similar.
And Avenue of Flags, by definition of your own master plan, isn't even considered a park. It's a respite area in your own language in your master plan.
Yeah. Well, I would just say that, as I think you pointed out, times have changed a lot for the parks and the areas in this community, and with the renovation of Memorial Park and the way it stands today, and that's what we're talking about, is what we're going to do today, I certainly support putting it in that area. I think that makes sense, given today's traffic. As you pointed out, that's the place that you'd go, and I would totally support that.
Noel, you have thoughts?
Lots of thoughts.
Good.
Thank you. I'm impressed on how far this has gone, and so I commend you for, the effort is amazing. I, I am okay with having it in Memorial Park also. I also look at other opportunities where, I mean, we see a lot of roads that are renamed for individuals. I'm not sure what road he lived on. He grew up, is, that road could be named. I like the pavilion idea. We already have a amphitheater, I believe, that's Eric Dixon, over at the school, is that correct?
Different person?
Different person?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So then I, then I'm, I'm okay with having the memorial there, but I, I look at other opportunities here too, naming a street.
Well, if I can interrupt, he, they lived on Henrietta, and that would be an injustice to Mrs. Henrietta for doing what he donated all that.
Right, yes. She was good. Well, there's always an opportunity to name a different road. But that's an option, but the current, the current one is to put it at Memorial Park. I think that'd be a great idea.
Steve, I look forward to working with you for that location.
Okay, it'd be nice to set up a meeting with everybody involved in block area. But before I leave, I want to say the project is going very well, and we've almost got enough funds to commission a bronze artist to start on the statue. We're just very close, so thank you very much.
Steve, before you leave, refresh my memory, that seemed like it was a $50,000, $60,000 number.
Fifty-five for the bronze, and the pedestal is going to run somewhere as around 20 grand. And what we plan on doing, the pedestal, it's going to be hexagon-shaped, as I mentioned, and Eric's statue will be right in front of the front panel of the hexagon. And then as the hexagon goes around, we intend to sell spots on those two panels for $100. That's what it's going to cost, is have it blast, a name blasted in there. But if anyone has a relative or is a Vietnam veteran themselves, but anybody who served in Vietnam, for $100, we're going to add their name on each one of those panels with a welcome home above it. And that will memorialize them for fighting in that war, and also help defer the cost of the base itself.
Stephen, for those listening and those here today, give us the contact information. Somebody out there listening right now might want to contribute.
The contact information, anybody from, have a-
Hi. Hi, Mary Levy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Donations can be made to the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 1980, Eric B. Dixon Post at Int Credit Union.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Steve, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, folks. Good night. This is way past, I'm a two o'clock riser and usually in bed 50 minutes ago.
Okay, we will move on. No additions, deletions, or corrections tonight, so Suzanne, we move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening we have one item on the consent calendar, and that is the minutes of the November 16th, 2017 regular council meeting.
Counsel, questions about minutes on the 16th? Not a call for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve consent calendar.
Second. Thank you, Suzanne.
Harvey? Yes. Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Suzanne. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we'll move on to ordinances on initial posting, and we have one, and welcome Mike Farina.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. After several work sessions and even a few council meetings on the 2018 proposed annual budget, we have before you tonight the initial posting, the 2018 proposed annual budget. At the last meeting that we did have, we presented a budget that council had requested where we give the unrestricted unassigned fund balance to the 10% reserve, which we achieved. Since that discussion, there were, there was a couple of changes. One was to move the funds that were in the special projects office, part of them being moved to a contribution line item, and that was moved to the elected officials budget. The remainder of that, $24,400-
That was Main, Main Street, not Special Projects.
Main Street. The other part of that was $24,400, and that was placed in the IT budget for vision, strategy plan for broadband. So that, that's reflected in, I think, I think you received revised ordinance with that. And then we also added another $15,600 to that amount, along with grant revenue, to have in the budget $40,000 for the broadband planning. That, that $15,600 would be subject to actually getting grants prior to being spent. However, we felt it was a good idea to have it in the budget, along with the grant revenue, and then we can seek those grants, and then if we are successful in obtaining the grant funds, then we would have the $40,000 already budget to continue our evolution strategy plan.
The extra $16,000 doesn't affect the bottom line, then?
No. There's no effect to the bottom line. There's a small effect because of the tabor emergency or the calculations, however, we're still at the 10% reserve. However, we're still at the 10% reserve. And I ask that you consider the post-budget ordinance, as well as that public hearing for December 21st.
The only question I had about the addition of identifying grant money, is that grant money that we've already secured?
No.
We don't normally do that in the budget if we haven't, about a 99% guarantee that we're going to actually procure that money.
There is, there's, as I mentioned at a previous, I think it was council session, don't like to put in grant money if we don't know that we're going to get it. But that's if we already have the expenditures in the budget, and we're, and the thing that was proposed, I believe by Councilman McCarr, was to add $10,000 to seek grants for the North of Teller, Bill of Generation expenditures. Those were already budgeted, and what was suggested is add grant money to help offset that. But, so the expenditures were already in there, and just adding grant money. I didn't think that was a good idea. However, in this case, which we did the same thing for the Main Street, right, we had $7,200 expenditures with an expectation of having grants paid for that. That's similar to what is proposed now, is adding the expenditure $15,600, along with a grant revenue of $15,600. So they offset each other, with the caveat being that $15,600 cannot be spent unless grants secure. However, in the other case, where I said that's not a good idea, is that budget was our, that expenditure was already in the budget.
But the repercussion is then we have to adjust the amount that we must set aside for under Tabor, correct?
That's, it's a small amount, it's 3% of that.
It's kind of like working with Bitcoin, but I don't-
No.
What it did is brought our overage, if you remember, it was $1,679. It brings down like $849.
What I would ask council to do, if you adopt that part of the budget, is we'll just keep a very close eye on the expenditures associated with broadband, to make sure that we don't spend anything we don't have. So we will, what we will think of as available is the $24,400 until we get additional grant funding.
Yeah, and my conversations with Councilman McCarr, he agreed with that too.
He will be very happy to hear.
Yes. He will be?
Yes.
Good.
Not sure what difference it makes, but if I make him happy, then I want to do that.
Good.
It would just keep us from having to bring a supplemental appropriation later.
Yeah. Let the record show, Mayor Pro Tem's comments.
I want to make Val happy for Christmas.
Good. Council, anybody else? Okay. Mike, thanks very much. We're going to set this for, I did see that, sir, and I'll call on you afterwards. We're not going to talk about your, we're not going to allow you to come up now, but we will, and because it's not going to affect what we're going to do now. We're just setting this for two weeks from today, set the public hearing. You're certainly welcome to talk at the public hearing, but I'll still call on you today for your comments. That said, need a motion to consider 1313 on initial posting.
Motion to consider ordinance 1313, as presented.
Second. Thank you, Suzanne.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes, and with great appreciation to the staff, and to Mike in particular, and to the council for working through this over the last few months.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion carries.
Yeah, I'll tag on to what Carol said, especially two weeks from today, if we can approve this budget. It's been a long process, not just the people that are sitting at this podium, many people that are sitting in this room right now. And I hope that we have a sense that we can all work together. I've tried to do that as best we can. I know council is interested in hearing from everybody when we can. And so, we thank all of you for your help, and, you know, and what we're all trying to do is just make Woodland Park a better place to live. So, thank you for that. Okay, we'll move on. We have no public hearings and no new business tonight. So, public comment on items, not on the agenda. And Bob Carlson, let you start. How's that? Not exactly where you wanted, but you still get it. Please use the microphone, and you know the procedure.
Thank you for inviting me to speak, or allowing me to speak. I, at the workshop, I was starting to pass out these-
If you speak into it.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Thank you.
At the workshop, I was asked to defer my comments there and make them at the meeting this evening, and I was, had passed out these pictures. So, if you don't have one of these, please take one, and if you don't, just pass it to the council.
Yeah, I'm great too.
My particular issue was with the 410 account. I was concerned about the projects there. First of all, they weren't really clear in the budget, how much was for each project and anything about the projects. Basically, it was just this footnote saying that there were these improvements to Deval Street and that sort of thing. So, I've gone ahead and looked at what I thought were the projects. The first one, up in the top left corner, is at the intersection of 24 and Baldwin Street, right across from McDonald's, next to the cycle shop. And as I understand it, the city wants to spend $300,000 at that intersection to improve safety or something. If I'm unclear here, it's because I don't have a lot of information from the budget on this. But I've looked at that area, and I cannot see what requires $300,000 of improvements there. I've talked to Fred's Towing to try to identify what are the dangerous streets in town, and they said there's no dangerous streets for the streets themselves, it's people that have bald tires, et cetera, et cetera. It's driving habits over the speed limit and things like that. It's human caused accidents. So the next one is $100,000 for putting, providing 40 more parking spaces to the high school. The city agreed that when we took 40 spaces for the aquatic center, that at some point in the future, when they needed it, we would provide 40 more spaces. You could see from the picture there, there are lots and lots of spaces left right now. And so, the city, the school does not need 40 more spaces, probably for a few more years. And although we would, one of the reasons we built the aquatic center was to attract families with children here and try to build up the school population here. But I think it will be a couple of years in the future before we actually need those spaces. So that would be $100,000, I don't think needs to be spent now. The next two pictures in the next row is South Park Street. And we have that big ditch there. And on the right side, you've got a picture in front of, what's his name?
Gina.
Yeah, his garage. And I could concede that perhaps from that road, what you see at the very bottom of the picture there, up to his garage, probably could use something like grates or something over the ditch there. But for the rest of it, which is showed on the left side, there's really no urgent need to do anything about that. The bottom two pictures are pictures of Deval Street. And the city is maintaining that we need to do something about drainage. That street goes along the top of the ridge behind the trailer park that's down in the DDA property. There's a ridge there, and then there's like a little alley, this is a really narrow road, despite what it looks like, that goes along that ridge. And then, water flows off the road in both directions. Well, it's not a lot of water. It's like what would land on the road right there. When you want to talk about water, most townhouses in this city have got lots of water running off hills and mountains and the neighborhood property, et cetera. But if you take a look, close look at the bottom right corner, that homeowner has done some little work about, doing something about the drainage that would come in his property. And then, at the end of his building, there's a little spillway that goes down, down the property. But between South Park Street and Deval, they want to spend a million dollars to fix those two problems. And most of it's not a problem. I concede probably spending $50,000 four or five years ago, when the garage was talked about, the city was saying, well, you should put in $45,000 to provide access to your garage. It started a $40,000 project, and now it's ended up as a million. So, my contention is that these projects shouldn't be approved this year. It's basically a waste of money, and just bringing that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Noel, you have a question, or?
Sure, Bob, go ahead and stay there, because, so, my understanding is your concerns with the 410 account, and you're going to try to have a petition, or to put it, amendment change to combine the 410 with the general, correct?
Yes.
You want to talk about that now, Bob?
No, I'd rather do it under election business at the very end.
You would?
Okay, then I would- Suzanne, Suzanne suggested I talk about the petitions.
Okay, well, maybe I can change it a little bit before we get there. These projects here, do you feel that the council is not involved enough with the future projects of the streets, and that's what your concern is?
Yeah, I had recommended years ago, because council didn't really want to get into the nitty gritty on projects, that council set up another advisory board. Because we're talking millions of dollars here, and when we have Parks and Rec Advisory Board, we're talking a couple thousand. I mean, really, we need, if the council doesn't want to get into the projects, you can have engineers on an advisory board that will do the work for you, and dig into these projects. And not only these, any other capital projects that come along in the future, that somebody needs to look at these, to see if they're justified.
Okay, so I guess I could refer to the city manager on this question. In the past, how involved, because I mean, I remember approving things, I don't remember getting involved in the design or in what projects we were going to do. What could be maybe in the future, how could the city council get more involved in those projects in the 410?
One of the things that we've mentioned to the council is that we do intend to work on a, whoa. Okay, that's my calculator. Okay, so should I turn this off? That's really annoying, isn't it?
Yeah, we can hear it double.
Okay. Get away down there. As we've talked to council earlier in the budget work sessions, we've committed to five-year capital plans across the board. We've been working with capital plans, what I'll call stove pipes, for years. We had a 10-year pavement management plan. We've created, you allowed us to fund and create a stormwater master plan. We've had a comprehensive plan. We've had a Parks, Trails, and Open Space master plan. We've had master plans across the board. As far as the details go on selections of streets or drainage projects, you've allowed the staff to do that, based on the results of those studies. The pavement management plan uses a scientific approach to tell us which streets need the most work, the most attention, and with what application. And it's served us very well for 10 years. Same with the stormwater master plan. The project on South Park is both a resurfacing project, a mill and overlay, or a full-depth reclamation, and a drainage project. So it's combining two of those master plans to accomplish something that we committed to the community three years ago, when the How-To store was built. We're combining it with the dual project, as we mentioned before, because there's a water line that needs to be replaced. And if we're going to rip up the road, now would be the time to do the resurface and the installation and curb and gutter. The picture that Mr. Carlson showed of the swale on the left there, that wasn't done by the homeowner, that was done by the city, because the stormwater, as minimal as he may think it is, ended up going into several people's homes. So we created that as a diversion, so that we could get the time to finish a design, to finish that project, so we would not have an adverse impact on those property owners. It makes sense, because dual is right up above Park, to combine those two projects together. So, I've deviated a little bit from your question. Council has been interested, has understood the plans, has allowed the staff to execute the pavement management plans and the stormwater master plans. You ultimately fund us, and we will answer any questions that you have about projects. But we have committed to putting a consolidated five-year master plan together, capital improvement plan, so that we can look out into the future, so that you can look out. We have all that information. We want you now to do that. We think that's a more sophisticated approach to planning, and we're ready to proceed with that.
Right, so my question, and you answered it, I'm trying to get down to Bob's major concern. Are we just spending too much money, Bob?
No. It's, we're wasting money.
We're wasting money.
Yeah.
And if we didn't, where would we put the extra money then?
Put it in an escrow account.
And just do, let it sit there for what?
Until council decides how to spend it.
We've decided how to spend it, though.
Well, but this is a waste of money, not-
On whose opinion?
Well, from what information I received. But the problem is, we don't have a capital investment committee where people can look into details of what the staff knows. Okay, Dave, I want to respond to what David said. I had a ballot issue, which involved a planning, programming, and budgeting procedure. And at your request, saying, and confirming what you've just said, the city is planning to come up with a five-year capital improvement plan, budget, I mean, a plan, so that council will see all the requirements that are out there, and they can prioritize what comes forward, okay? And so, I withdrew that as a ballot question, okay? Because they committed to doing this. So, that's behind us, I think. But when David was talking about scientific approach of how we do our streets, I was involved in developing these tools with Mo Shaheen at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Civil Engineering Research Lab, develop Paver, okay? I worked with Don Yuzarsky and those folks there, Lance Moreno, et cetera, in developing these tools. And what it is, is you have five experts who have done surveys, pavement analysis, and they are shown a hundred yard stretch, and then you count the number of deficiencies and the extent of deficiencies in that area. And then, the five experts say, yeah, on a scale of one or 100, that's a 90, or that's an 80, or that's a 70. And so, that's the extent of the scientific, is it's creating algorithms from somebody who's not an engineer, that who can go out there and look at what it is, and count it and measure it. That's all.
So, the solution would be, and maybe this is a suggestion to the council, is to create a capital projects committee, and that would-
I would love it.
That would help yate this concern you have.
Bob, to me, you're showing lots of disrespect for our city manager, our city engineer, because the process is pretty clear. I mean, they decide, prioritize pavement management plan, then it's given to a number of people to give estimates for, then it comes back, they pick the best estimate. Now you want to put three more people, I'm sure you, into this process, and I'm going to just argue this, 10 other people could come up and say, I don't like what those three engineers did. So I'm not sure where you end this process.
No, they're there to look at whether there are less expensive alternatives, whether the scope is correct to solve the problem, et cetera. All you have to do is look-
You don't think city staff can do that?
No, I have never met an organization where the people that are developing a requirement also approve the requirement, okay? If you are in any other government and organization, including Teller County, they have a process where these projects are screened by- where these projects are screened by some, somebody else other than the one that wants to have the project. The person that puts up the project themselves, yeah, they're going to say, hey, I want it, okay? But you need a second set of eyes. And that's what council's fiduciary responsibility is, to look at all of these projects. And I'm proposing that if council doesn't want to do that, because you're not all engineers or whatever, you set up a committee to do that. So that there are seven, second set of eyes. Now Paul was, I've talked to Paul, I've talked to Val about this, and Paul, I mean, he's a construction guy, and he says, we can really do a lot cheaper than what city is proposing on solving these problems. So I'm sorry he's not here today, but he will be here in two weeks, but...
Well, remember what these numbers are. They're engineers' estimates, except for Park Street that has a, by engineers' estimates, I mean from the staff. The Park Street is a true engineer's estimate, so I might fully expect they're going to come in less than this too. But when you say cheaper, that's not what this community wants. This community wants good value. And so to do some of the things that you and council member Sonier have suggested on Park Street are inappropriate for this environment. And they may or may not be cheaper, we don't know. But as we move through the design process, we find the absolute best value for this community. The council is another set of eyes. There have always been engineers on this council that have challenged us as to the things that we do. I disagree with you that these are a waste of money. These all accomplish good things that, for the community. Things that they agreed to do with that one cent sales tax thirty-three years ago. We're still in compliance with that. We're still doing good things for this community. And there is an opportunity for council to review. If they don't like what they see, then they challenge the staff and that's what we do.
I, I would say when I was on council as the engineer and I would object to certain projects, I was voted six, six to one against me.
Well, I, I can't address that. That's, that's the process.
And I was, I was told we don't want to look at the projects.
Doesn't that tell you something?
That means you don't want to do your fiduciary responsibility.
It doesn't. It means we want to oversee and that's what our job is. Our job is not to, is not to be engineers for our city projects. That's what these folks are doing, that's what we pay them for. Now, if you want to sit up here and you want to see the project, that's all you have to do. And I don't think anybody ever said to you, Bob, no, as a councilman, you can't see the project. And Val and Paul and everybody up here can ask to see about the project, get any information they want.
And I asked for the projects in greater detail and I didn't get any answer from the city.
You get it when the time's right.
Well, this is back at the beginning of the budget process. That's the time is right. Now, I used to be on the NATO infrastructure committee. We approved billions of dollars worth of projects every year, okay? But we also killed a lot of projects. And I like to bring up one that David also worked with me on NATO infrastructure. He used to work at Setlas, uh, Land Southeast, one of our regional subordinate commands. And Turkey submitted a project for a hundred and twenty million dollar pipeline to Eastern Turkey. I don't know if David was there at the time, I don't know. But it was to take the, the supply of fuel from sixty days to a seventy-five days. That project came to my committee and I says, how many days of fuel ammo storage do you have? Three days. It just takes a little bit of linking things together and say, and that killed that project. A hundred and twenty million dollar project down the drain. And so it's important that a second set of eyes take a look at the rationale behind these things. And, and that's what I'm proposing, is that you, you have like an international staff or the comptroller of DOD. There's a lot of people within the DOD chain that looked at your budget a lot of times. And then Congress, congressmen sit around like this and they question the four stars as, or the one stars as if it's an engineer. Why do you need this project? They appropriate funds project by project. And that's Congress level. And this, this committee doesn't even want to look at the projects or this council. So that's what I'm trying to say, change is, is that if you don't have the expertise to want to do this, then at least get an advisory committee to come for you, for, you know, make recommendations to you. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your time, Bob. Go ahead, Ken.
Bob, I'd just like, I guess the part that bugs me a little bit, you know, we have staff, we have people that are doing this, that understand what this city needs. If they're going to dig up this street, they're going to resurface it and while they're doing that, they need to put in a water line or a drainage line or other issues. They know to consider all that. They know this territory. They're not outsiders, they know it. And unless somebody's identified a problem, creating a committee to oversee them, I see a problem with that. I trust these people. Apparently you don't. I do.
Why would you build, spend a hundred thousand dollars for a high school parking lot that may be years away from you? Well, I just disagree with your assessment.
That's your speculation.
Yeah.
It's been checked on.
Bob, thanks, thanks for your time. We're going to end this now. Because we're going to hear from you again. All right, next on my list, I have Elijah Murphy.
Excuse me, Elijah Murphy, 204 West Midland Avenue, Woodland Park, Colorado. Good evening, Mayor, and...
Sorry, Elijah, let us pass these out real quick. Thank you. Oh, this is...
Going to address, but if it's this, then this is perfect.
Go right ahead.
And I'll read this into the record.
I was just going to thank you all for considering Memorial Park for a fallen Marine. Just a little history for you, Richard Ferguson, AKA Fergie, was an extremely good friend of mine, okay? And Richard Ferguson's great uncles helped build the tunnels to Cripple Creek. He actually has roots and connections in here. He did, his family moved away and he grew up in Massachusetts, however. So, this evening I would like to talk about tax revenues and the expenditure tax revenues. We were complimented, the Main Street Council was complimented tonight on having the most volunteer hours of any other Main Street organization out there in Colorado. The Woodland Park Main Street did that. They also completed everything in the work plan that was submitted to DOLA. And to answer, I'll let Paul Sonier know when he gets back, but to answer the question, Colorado DOLA does not receive federal funding for the local Main Streets. So the chances of us getting cut on the funding from that angle is not real high. And being one of the people privileged to do business in this town by virtue of the fact that I collect taxes, I, I'm also always concerned about what services we, as business owners, receive for those tax monies. I always hear people talk about a level playing field. And I know there are many, many, many definitions for that, because every time I ask somebody, it's always a different definition. My definition of a level playing field is that everybody plays by the rules, regardless of how painful those rules are. For instance, I was under the impression the other night that Main Street was the only nonprofit that received funding from the city. And it's not. That kind of, well, I, I, that was the impression council left me with, was that there was no, nobody else except for Main Street received any of that funding, okay? And I know that the Chamber of Commerce receives, they're what, scheduled for forty-two eight this year, coming year, for conducting operations of the visitor center. Well, one of my oversight problems would be that maybe there's a city employee who is responsible for preparing the budget, sits on the board of directors of that organization. That, to me, just on the outside looking in, I have a problem with that. Because not all of these organizations are being held to the same standard of bringing forward and accounting for every dollar spent. I, I think it's a great idea. I think it's great that Main Street should come forward and give the council a quarterly briefing. But I also think it's, would be great that all of the organizations that are funded by the city that are with public monies should also be held to that same standard. It creates that level playing field, okay? I mean, would it be fair if the mayor, because he is the mayor, didn't have to pay city sales tax or charge his customers city sales tax? All right? Because he's the mayor? No, it wouldn't. Because I do it. We all play by the same rules. So just thought I'd drop that in your ear.
Murph, real quick.
Sir?
Um, you're here all the time. I'm sure you didn't miss it. Deb Miller's here every year. She gives a great report, talks about return on investment. She is held to the same standard that you are being held to. And I don't think you can argue with that.
Okay, I'll go back and do some looking on that. Thanks for that note. And I was also here on numerous occasions when Darlene Jensen was giving reports. And it's kind of muddied the waters for me a little bit as to why DOLA was not allowed to come in and give a briefing on these items. And it just seems like there's somebody barring a door somewhere for us. I think Main Street's a great organization and if there was something going wrong, believe me, I would be up here right now telling you about it anywhere I see anything. Because to me, integrity, accountability and responsibility are one of the most important things that any one of us have or carry. However, we also know people out there, and I can tell you the number of employees I've gone through in the last couple of years, people have it or they don't.
Murph, you're confusing me because I stood here, as you well know, for the last couple of months and said, I'm not in favor of funding Main Street. I just don't believe, I haven't seen that outcome or the results like John corrected me, right? I've said it, and I've said it, and I've said it. What did I do and what did we all do? When the time came to fund, you gave me money.
Yes, sir, I get that.
We said, we want to be a part. We believe in what you're doing. Come back and show us on a quarterly basis so that we can reevaluate and we can continue to support you. You know, I just, it's a total mischaracterization what you're asking me, because I certainly changed my mind because of all of you and how you've worked together and how you propose. And I saw value even though I haven't seen results. I see that there's possibilities there and so I decided to go a different direction as many other on the council have. So I just don't understand what I'm missing relative to what you just said. Did I say something?
Well, then I was under the misconception then that you were very against Main Street, that you could not see the value added. And you've said it repeatedly that you couldn't see the value, okay?
Well, were you at the last budget meeting?
Yes, sir, and the funds were approved.
And what did I say? I'm all for it.
Yes, sir.
Tried to lead that. I thought that would be a positive step.
Okay, because the previous meeting, you were, it almost sounded like Carol picked up where you left off from the previous meeting, okay?
Absolutely.
So...
You know what, I'm just...
Total misconception on my part.
I don't need to be right, Murph. I'm trying to get it right.
Yes, sir, me too.
And these people convinced me, you convinced me and all of us, that maybe we're heading in the wrong direction. And I think we should be commended.
Well, no...
Because we did, we did change our mind and we are in support and we will continue to support as long as you come back with the things that we ask. So don't get us wrong, we're rooting for you. I've said it a hundred times, even when I said Main Street is, is not certainly on top of my list, I see the value. I see where it can help the whole community. I haven't seen it yet, but in my opinion, this is almost like, here's another chance to show us how great you guys could be and you got support from everybody. If I was sitting in your shoes, I would be up here saying, thank you for that.
That was going to be my closing line, Mayor. I'm sorry. Was going to thank you for the thirty thousand dollars and the opportunity for Main Street to go on, okay? But I, I don't always see where everybody's held to the same standard is what I'm saying, okay? We will go forward and while I'm the DDA rep to Main Street, we will do our best to make it right and bring this stuff. The preceding two, two to three years were all of the hurdles that had to be made by the people and that, and the city for that matter.
You convinced us all. Let's see, let's see what we can do next year. We're all here for you, trust me.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping we'll all be here next year too.
So I think I'm under, the visitor center and the chamber, the chamber's a 501(c), but they're also, we give them money to support the visitor center.
Yes, sir.
And, well, well, the held to the same standard, I understand now that I think about it, is that we, we meticulously went over the Main Street budget, but we don't go over visitor center budget. We don't see a breakdown of how much papers being here. Do I, if we have, I haven't seen it. So maybe that's the, I just see the visitor center getting forty-two thousand, that's it. I don't see the breakdown.
The presentation that the president of the chamber gives every year covers that in great detail. And there's a bit of a difference that's, that's important. It's, we have, we hire the chamber, it's a contract. We hire them for a very specific service.
I understand that part.
And that's to do the visitor center. Well, it's a, it's a very different arrangement than what council agreed to with Main Street. But the chamber is, it's held to actually, I think, a higher standard because we have a contract for services that they must perform to.
And that's kind of where I'm trying to answer his question, his concerns, by seeing, by leading, which, so does that make more sense, Murph?
Sure. I'm on it.
Let, let me make a comment then. When I came to the budget workshop session earlier this week, I was not in favor of giving Main Street program a single dollar. When we came to the vote, I voted for the thirty thousand dollars because the story made sense and it is extremely important that you'll come back to the council quarterly and tell us what's happening and what's going to happen. As far as taxpayer funds going to nonprofits, there are others who get these funds primarily through the community investment fund. And so there are others who are improving their performance use, through the use of taxpayer funds.
So I just want to say one last thing, and I talked to someone in the audience prior about this. When I, when I grew up, I was taught that there's no such thing as problems, there's only challenges. So I never look at a, at a problem like it's, like I can never solve it. I always look at challenges. And I think Main Street, we've given Main Street an opportunity to take on that challenge and prove some of us wrong. Prove us that, prove that Main Street is, needs our, needs the funding. Prove it to us. Prove us wrong. I hope you do. I hope you come back in, every quarter and say, this is what we've done, this is what we've done and, and put your shoulders back and your head up and say, Main Street needs to be in this community. Make it a challenge.
One of my things is that I am always, I am never in big favor of redistribution of the wealth, so to speak. I'm not really in favor of these...
Me neither.
I'm not in favor of government taxing to make... Kill the mouse. However, I get, I do get the benefit of it. And I like being there to help make it. But what I really want to do is come back and prove to you that we, as Main Street, don't need the funding in the end. The ultimate goal is to become self-sufficient, standing on our own two feet and going forward. And so when we start talking personalities and everything like that, okay, the number one item for me, I had to work with a lot of people I really didn't like. We had two leaders and ten very strong alpha male personalities in a small room together on a daily basis or out in the woods together. And it's sometimes it really sucked, okay? But that's where I, I'm always willing to put aside my differences and come forward. But I always stood there and I liked holding myself to a higher standard and sometimes other people couldn't quite make the standard. I know there were standards I could make. But at the same time, we need to find that level playing field where everybody is held to the same amount of accountability.
Well, then you've got some...
And following the rules.
You've got a big ladder to climb.
I'm going to do my best.
Because the visitor center does show results.
Yes.
A lot of results. And so, if Main Street's going to show those same results, you better start getting on that ladder.
Well, there, and therein lies the problem. There is a misconception in the community that unless you pay the money to the city, to the, to the, what do you call it? The Chamber of Commerce, unless you pay to join and be a member...
Well, that's a whole different discussion right there.
Yeah.
I have a feeling I know where you're going. But I think that's a whole different discussion. But what I get back to is that Main Street proved us wrong.
I'm going to prove you right, that you rightfully put the money out there and we will use it correctly and make a good deal out of it.
I look forward to it.
And not lead, not need it anymore.
Thank you.
My name's Michael Dalton. I live at 413 Woodland Avenue. And I just want to address a couple of things real quick. I totally am for the roadwork that you were talking about earlier. Bob, I'm not an engineer, but I live on Woodland Avenue, and it has flooding issues every year. And that water comes right down those roads. So I'm totally for that. And again, I just want to reiterate what Murph said about the statue. I think it's an awesome idea in Memorial Park. I sent an email to Chrissy a couple of days ago, maybe a week ago, two weeks ago, and I just asked about the marketing department here at the city. And, and she said there's not one. And then, all this money that's being tossed around to these different organizations like the visitor center, that's really for marketing of the city, to bring visitors in, to bring people in. Main Street, same thing. Bring people in, stuff like that. All these things that we put in our city to bring people here, to entice people to move here, to live here, to visit here, and do those things. But yet, the city doesn't have anybody telling that story about themselves. And this has come up more than once tonight. When the Forest Service was up here, and they asked for your help, they asked for a signature. And you said, "We want to do more than just sign, be the first one to sign that paper." And through education, but education has changed now where you guys could be the educators in marketing. You don't have to have a big team. We're given tons and tons of resources today that reach a lot of people and even your constituents. Be a politician, is what I'm saying, so that the people hear you out there. I personally know that there are social media pages in this community that reach 3,000 to 6,000 people that live in Teller County. And that's measurable with online analytics. I don't have to come up here and do a presentation. You can see the numbers and make that happen. But not only are they reaching 3,000 to 6,000 people locally, I run some pages that reach 150,000 plus a week globally. I know I'm the Woodland Park Underground, if you didn't know that. I know that's a sore subject with all kinds of people. Yesterday, I flew in this morning at 6:00 a.m. from Salt Lake City. I was at the Wells Fargo Tech Summit with some of the world's top marketers. I had lunch with Gary Briggs, who's the CMO of Facebook. He's the number two at Facebook. Alex Hager was there. He runs Trivago, which is going to take over the travel industry with Facebook in the next five years. You will no longer hear about Expedia or any of those. If this city doesn't take hold of new media and begin to use it, you can waste money on Feather and Ink marketing. And, and you can throw five grand at brochures for the city to do different stuff, and I know you've done that. You can do more than just sign with Feather and Ink. You're, you're the face of the city, and it is, in my opinion, you should be out in front of the city in those free media markets that those people are watching every day. I know you guys are setting the budget. I'm not here to ask for money. I'm not here to even get involved with this. But I'm just pleading with you over the next year, when you look at your budgets for things like Main Street and the visitor center. There are cities around Colorado that spend lots of money just in marketing their own people. You know, putting money into businesses that are doing good. We saw a little bit of that in the social, or the business revolution and how that has taken place in different parts of the world. But I was talking to a business owner who texted me yesterday as I was at the summit, a business owner that is in this town that I've worked with, and I've worked with multiple business owners in this town. And the business owners I work with, they're very successful. They're some of the most successful business owners in this town. And through Green Mountain Falls, all the way through Florissant. And they have taken hold of this new media, this stuff where you can tell the story, you can educate your people, and it's simply putting content out there. And if you don't have someone that's doing that in your city, then you don't, it doesn't matter how great the story of Woodland Park is, if nobody's telling it, it doesn't matter. And if nobody's listening because we're still advertising with Feather and Ink, then those Feather and Ink pieces of paper end up in my wood burner, and they're not going to be there. So, I encourage the city to look at new marketing ideas over the next year. And as you, as you grow, I like to call it Vision 2020 for Woodland Park, because we're only two years away from the year 2020. And most of you grew up, and you know what yellow pages are, and you know what rotary phones are, and you know that stuff. But today, we all can have an audience, and I think the city should have a global audience to attract billions of people from overseas. There's markets of visitors that are coming to America, and they would love to come see America's mountain. They would love to go fishing in Deckers. They would love to go out to the Dream Stream. They would love to ride the trails of this forest. But there are people in Colorado that don't even know where Woodland Park is. And, and that's sad. So, anyway, that's my little spiel. Thank you for your time.
Michael, thank you very much.
Oh, I, I want to respond to this.
You can't. We're not going to have conversation, but you can respond.
Sure. Thank you, Michael, for addressing this. I do, I do believe in social media. I do believe it's a double-edged sword, though. Based on what you're saying, we should just take all the brick and mortars and get rid of them, right? And just order everything on Amazon? Is that...
Absolutely not. But let me ask you this. Where, where do you go buy a Woodland Park t-shirt in this town? Or a gift shop? I mean, those are little things.
That's someone that should start a t-shirt shop.
Right?
Yeah. I, I understand where you're coming from. That's right.
Michael, if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Michael, Chrissy was absolutely right. We do not have a marketing department, but we do have marketing budgeted. In 2016, we, we had an individual that was doing a lot of that marketing work. The council didn't refund that position, so it fell to our special projects office. And that office works very closely with the Chamber of Commerce. So we overlap marketing, not as much of the social media as, as I know you're involved with. We're starting to explore what some of those things are. We dropped back on some of, as you call it, Feather and Ink kinds of things. We do have a Facebook page, where we have a very nice website. We do the best that we can. We know we can do better. But we do have some marketing opportunities within the budget, and we'll take what you say and, and explore that.
Thanks, Michael. And while you're sitting down, I just want you to listen to what I have to say. I've never met you before. You appear to be smart, without question. Great leader, without question. Why don't you want to help us instead of spending all your time in the underground? Couldn't you be more positive? Couldn't you make us better by working together with us? Wouldn't it make more sense? Smart guy, wants the best for the community, and what I hear about you is the underground. You could be so much more positive. You could be a great asset to us. I wish you would think along those lines.
That's why he's here.
I'll take that. I will respond to that.
Would you please, Michael? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I think that's why he's here, Mayor, to, to show some...
I didn't hear it.
Well, absolutely, but you probably know very little about the positive I've done.
Right.
So, so you know about the negative, obviously. But two years ago, I helped promote the National Night Out. Did both a, a promotion for it and a highlight video afterwards. I also did Shop with a Cop. I promoted the Christmas Parade four years in a row. 2014, most of you don't know this, but I was paid by Good Morning America to run a clip of Woodland Park on Good Morning America. Some of my videos have reached hundreds of thousands, couple of them a million people. And so, when I do positive, I don't throw my name all over it. I helped the Lions Camp raise $15,000 for their scholarships this year. I've helped promote the rodeos. I've helped promote... Holiday Home Tour. I've helped promote the Aquatic Center. So, yeah, I, I don't look to get credit for the, for the positive things. I'll, I'll tell you why I do it, so that you know why I do it. Because 100 years from now, they're not going to tell the story on the newspaper. But my videos will still be out there. And the story of Woodland Park will be out there. And it's not because I don't think anyone else can do it, it's just because no one else is. And a little bit of my background, real quick. I've worked on over 300 documentaries. I've filmed in over 53 countries. I've traveled the world and seen a lot of things. I choose to live here in Woodland Park. Moved here about 10 years ago, and I love this town. And so, when, when someone says, "I'm not helping the city," you hear about every time he shows up at my door, because I run a camera every time. And so, I encourage you, Mayor, reach out to me. Come have a cup of coffee. My second home's Cafe Leo. And I'll buy you a cup of coffee anytime, and you can learn more about me. And if you need to know more about the positive things I've done, you know, I've worked with, if I start listing the businesses, they, they run from Colorado Springs out to Buena Vista to build this corridor. And the reason I just appeared on the scene a few years ago is because I was challenged by a businessman in this community who said, "You know, Michael, I know you work globally, but you don't help our little town." And so I started doing that. And so, just, just a response to you.
Appreciate it. And I'll just respond by saying, "I'm sorry that I characterized it that way. I didn't know about the positive things you did." My kind of reaction is this. If possible, think about spending more time on the positive and less on the negative. And I'd love to go have coffee with you. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Okay, if you find this, that's the end of those that are signed up. So, move on to reports. And Mayor's Report, I've got a couple of announcements to make. Monday, December 11th, that's this coming Monday, is an important meeting, 6:00 to 7:30, right here in Council Chambers, for prospective candidates for the city election, which will be April 3rd. Suzanne will give us more insight on that shortly. The day after, this coming Tuesday, is the Business After Hours at the Edgewood Inn this year, 12th of December, from 5:30 to 7:30. Next Sunday, this coming Sunday, excuse me, 7:00 to 8:00, Woodland Park Symphony Jazzy Christmas Concert at the U-Pass Cultural Center. And then, Wednesday, the 20th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., a day in the park at Memorial Park Pavilion. Couple other announcements for everybody, probably nobody in this room, but we're having a few issues at the park in the pond. And please encourage people, we've got the greatest park, everybody talks about it. But when people are throwing huge boulders in the middle of the park, walking on the ice, when it's a nice, sunny afternoon, it's a safety hazard. One of the things we have is frozen solid.
I actually do have something to say. I'm not sure if I, I'll, the, I'll, I'll say this first. There's a little hidden-known gem in, in Woodland Park that a lot of people don't realize it's there. It's called the Teen Center. So I'd like to, I'd like to talk about the Teen Center a little bit. I got a little more involved recently and, and went over there and, and sat and watched the kids there. I talked to the administrators. I've been there three times in the last two weeks to see what's going on. And I went there three years ago, and three years ago, I was like, "Boy, this teen center should just close down, because there's nothing to do for the kids here. They're, they're bored to death here." So, a little, little birdie flew by and told me to go check it out. And so I did. And wow, I was impressed. Completely different teen center. I looked at how many kids had been there that day? 52 kids. Before, they could barely put eight kids in there. So huge difference. So what, I'll, I'll be talking to the staff and to the administrators, but what we've talked about so far is taking this teen center to the next level. We're going to, we're going to consider putting on computer classes, internet classes, robot classes, dances. They're going to maybe put on dances on Friday nights. They're going to get more involved, cooking, cooking classes. We want to take this to the next level. These kids, they get out of school, their parents are working, they have nowhere to go. You want them wandering around Woodland Park? Probably not. So, they come to the teen center. The teen center's open from 3:00 to 6:00. I'm hoping I can work with the staff to maybe keep it open until 7:00. I found out seven kids were kicked out on 6:00 o'clock. Their parents came, got them at 7:00. And they were out in the dark, in, in the cold. That's, that's not acceptable to me. So, I'll, I'll be working as a council member and as a volunteer to take this teen center to the next level. They are looking at donations. They've got a pool table, they've got air hockey, they've got Xbox, they've got PS4, they've got a big TV. I just donated three computers myself. So it's, they're looking for things. But if you have expertise in things that would give these kids life experiences... I, I, my, we were going to put on a filming class and see if we could have the kids create a teen center film and present it maybe at Movie Above the Clouds. My son did that. He went to California and took a film class at Universal Studios for a week. So he's learned how to do that. He has reservations about teaching it. So it's nice to see that we had a gentleman come here that has that amazing documentary skills that would, that said he wanted to have more positive impact, Mayor, in the community. So I wish that person would talk to me afterwards. But the teen center is, is just this hidden, hidden little gem that nobody knows about. And, and these kids there are just so positive. And every time I've gone there, they've, there's just, the energy there is, is so, is, is so thick that, that I, I don't know what, what more to say. But if you can visit that, see what these kids are doing, and see what the teen center's doing, I advise it. 3:00 to 6:00, every day. And donations are welcome. So thank you. Mayor, is this also a time to talk about strong mayor stuff?
Okay. Yeah. I, I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. That was great, Noel. Just have David chat on that a little bit. The leaders at the, at the teen center are...
The people? Candy McDaniel and Olivia Hernandez? And they're, they fall under the Build a Generation program, Karen Casey. We have a few...
We have a few things this evening, Mayor. We'll start with Mike and the Third Quarter Financial Report.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Uh, you have in your packet the Third Quarter Financial Report, as of September thirtieth, so we're several months past that now. Um, basically, the report shows that revenues are meeting or ahead of expectations, expenditures are where they should be, under budget. And, um, overall, the funds are in a healthy situation. The report takes the 2017 year to date, which was as of September thirtieth, compares it to the budget and where it's at, compares it to how far we are through the year, as well as compares it to last year's, with explanations of various, uh, different variances for each particular part of the report. So with that, I won't go into much detail about it, cause it's there before you're in. If there's any questions, uh, feel free to ask them. And, uh, I'll add-
I'd like just one thing, uh, that I can think of, and I know we've got Aquatic Center working out now. Give us a little rundown, one of the council members said that, um, gonna run two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the deficit next year.
This report is as of September thirtieth, so Aquatic Center is not open yet. Um, however, as was reported the other night, uh, the Aquatic Center revenues are at where projections were for that time, um, one month into the operations. So that's, uh, any more information?
Projection was a hundred and fifty thousand?
I believe it was a hundred and ninety.
For revenue?
For revenue.
What happened?
Ninety-five thousand as of December third. So I have, with half of the, keep on tomorrow. Thank you. Any other?
You need it?
Is that a bad one?
No, I, I didn't. But I am, I'm bad.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Suzanne?
Thank you, David. I just, um, as I've been doing in the past, the last few council meetings, I've been giving an election status update, and wanted to just update you a little bit more on what's happening in the Clerk's office regarding the April third, two thousand sixteen election. This week, um, I validated two petition initiatives for, um, the community, and one of them is a charter amendment, and one of them is a tax measure. If you want more detail, I can give you whatever detail you want. Mr. Carlson is here to talk about them, but let me just tell you a couple other things of importance as well. The prospective candidate is, um, Monday night, as the mayor said. It's not something that's mandatory to attend, and I just want people to understand that. If they don't attend, they can still run. We'd love to have you come. The first day to pick up petitions is January second. And so that's an important date for anyone out there that's interested in running for, um, mayor or council. And then those petitions will be back, and due back into my office on January twenty-second. So those are the key dates for now.
Can you briefly characterize the two-
Sure, or I can have Mr. Carlson come up and he can talk to them, but I can explain if you want any questions about the process.
This time, we'll bring up Bob and then we'll go from there. This is the right time.
Well, before Bob speaks, I, the, can you lay out the timelines for, uh, the petition process for a charter amendment or for a tax initiative? How, what, you know, how many signatures? At what point is it presented back to the, what role does council have, if any? Uh, if you could explain that?
I can tag team maybe with, um, the city attorney, and I can answer some of the questions, and then she can help me out here. Um, for the charter amendment initiative, the, they need three hundred and fifteen signatures. And that is, um, by state statute, that's five percent of the registered voters. And so currently, in the city of Woodland Park, we have six thousand two hundred and ninety-two registered voters as of the day that, um, the petition was brought to me, and I checked. So that's where that number comes up from. And then the initiative petition, that as per, um, our city charter, is fifteen percent of the registered voters. So that particular initiative needs nine hundred and forty-eight signatures.
And by what date, Suzanne?
Um, well, the charter amendment petition is due back in my office on January third to make it on this municipal election. And then we, the city attorney and I are researching the initiative petition, what date that's due back.
Thank you.
One question relative to that, and Bob's gonna come up the topic. On the strong mayor versus mayor, if in fact, the majority votes for strong mayor, do people live in that case?
That's a question that needs to be researched as well. Um, it's difficult to tell from the measure whether it's self-enabling, and even if it is, how it would dovetail with the existing, um, term provisions. So that would, that will take some research, and we will be able to report that.
As, as well as how would we, would that become a full-time, uh, a full-time position? How would it be funded? All of those would be, uh, follow-up charter amendments?
They, they wouldn't have to be follow-up charter amendments, you can do that by ordinance. You can set-
But our, our charter currently does not, um, address a salary for any council member.
No, and the, the, um, proposed amendment, as it is written, does set an initial salary, um, for the ma, strong mayor position, but it is subject to change by ordinance.
Thank you. I might.
Okay, Bob, I think this might be the time. Thanks for your patience. I wanna get you in in the right place, so thanks for helping me out with that.
Uh, Bob Carlson, eleven- Okay. Bob Carlson, eleven fifty-five, Windflower Lane, Woodland Park, Colorado. Um, you've heard, uh, some information about the dates and that sort of thing, and the number of signatures we have to have. Uh, as of today, the, uh, ballot initiatives have gone out, uh, for, get, collecting signatures. Uh, Murph and a group of people are, are taking that on, although I'm gonna probably do my neighborhood. Uh, but that process has started, and we're looking for as many signatures where, as we can possibly got, get, not just the three fifty or the nine hundred. We'd like to get a thousand if possible. But, uh, there are two, two amendments, and, and I think everybody's had, has them, and so they can take a look. Uh, uh, and because I think they were forwarded before, um, I wanna thank Aaron for providing the, the legal review of these, uh, the draft ordinances that we did, uh, which are part of the, the ballot, or the petition process. Uh, and, uh, one of, one of the things I wanted to do though, to, tonight is, is say that council does have a chance to look at these. Uh, and I think Aaron can probably do more. But if, if council doesn't pass these as an ordinance, right now, they're like draft ordinances with XXX for the numbers. Uh, but council, according to Aaron's letter, can request her to make them into ordinances, which then come to, uh, council, and you can discuss all aspects. Uh, I know two of the issues had to do with the strong mayor. What should the salary be? And another one, what, what should their term be? I know Aaron struck out the part about the term, because it's already in the charter, and we're not changing that. So, uh, it's up to council then, if they want to have an ordinance and put that on the ballot in, in, uh, April. Oh, I don't, I'm not sure. I, I think I heard Aaron, that whatever ordinance, if there are two on the same subject, it's whatever which one gets the most votes that passes, right? Is that correct, Aaron?
That would be correct.
Okay. So if council doesn't like what we currently have out there, you do have a chance to ask Aaron to prepare an ordinance that you guys can consider, okay? Uh, and I would suggest you do that tonight, although you could wait till next week. Uh, it's doable by, you know, to meet the April third timeframe, if you, you don't do it tonight. And if you don't do it, then you'll just have what you got here. Uh, if, in fact, we get those signatures. Now, uh, you, Noel wanted to ask a few questions about my, uh, at least one of the two proposals, so, uh, I can ask and answer any questions, uh, that anybody has about the, the two, uh, ballot, uh, ballot, uh, petitions. Uh, like, like you said, there was one that had to do with strong mayor, and the second one had to do with the moving one percent sales tax that currently goes to the streets into the general fund. And, um, and that, that allows you to spend that, that money in any way that the council wants to spend that money. My, my purpose for having done that was to try to reduce property taxes for all the property owners in the city, but that's not in the, the, um, ballot question. It just pays, provides a lot of money in the general fund, and it's up to council to decide how much goes to what very, various places. And that's your role, uh, as a council, to determine how to spend resources. So if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Noel, do you have a question?
I don't know if anybody wants to go first, though. Will I get this cough done here? Cause my, my concern is many. Um, do you, are we gonna talk about this, or are we going to do what?
We're not gonna do anything today. We can talk about it, you can ask questions, so.
Um, I gotta get this cough out of my throat, though.
John or Ken or Karen? Any comments on anything that Bob has brought forward? They would wait for Noel. Have some water, pal?
Pressure on you there, buddy?
Need some more water, pal?
Yeah.
Your hip clasp.
Oh, a cough drop? All right, I'll, I'll take that. So, I would like to discuss this, and I'm hoping the council would like to discuss this too.
Nope.
Nope? No? Okay, so, um, Bob approached me about six months ago on this, and so he's been working on it for a while. Um, and I initially, I, I will honestly say, I initially said, "Oh, that's a great idea. You know, I, maybe we could have a strong mayor system." Colorado Springs went for it.
Pueblo.
Well, Pueblo just went for it. But then I started to research it recently and, and kinda got into the details of it, and, uh, Bob and I have talked, and, and my biggest concern is unintended consequences. We don't know really what's gonna happen, and right now, Colorado Springs and Pueblo are more of an experiment to me. Uh, I don't know of any other cities in Colorado that are strong mayor. I'm, you know, that I'm aware of, do you? Denver has a strong mayor now. Wow, are we following that?
Most of the big cities are going to strong mayor. If, if trend is going in that direction. Between hundred thou, between ten thousand population and, and a hundred thousand population, it tends to be more in the, uh, city manager of city council form of government. Under ten thousand, it tends to be more strong mayor.
Or bu-
Opposite.
What? Under ten thousand?
Under ten thousand is council-
No, is council, strong mayor. Well, one of the reasons is that-
I don't think so.
-smaller towns can't afford city managers.
Well, I'm just gonna throw some concerns out there that I have. I see the pros to it. I see where the citizens can choose or select the individual that they want to run the community. I, I think that's Bob's biggest-
Yeah. It's a principle.
That's the biggest principle, where they're elected. Um, I do see some cons.
See more cons?
I think Denver and, and Colorado-
Let me go back to this event.
Uh, the salary. So it'd be changed, uh, so you, five thousand a month, right? I know that.
You're asking someone to double be city manager and mayor?
Half of what our current city manager does, and he doesn't do-
You guys read it?
Um, yes.
Why is that?
I looked at, when, in putting this together, and I talked to more people than you.
Right.
Um, I thought of giving, making it zero. I mean, this is really a symbolic number, okay? Uh, we have a tradition of, of city council, you know, being volunteered base, including the mayor. But I felt in this situation, that, you know, that's, that's gonna be some work, okay? And then I thought symbolically, well, the mayor should get the same income as the lowest paid employee in town. Uh, as a symbolic thing. And then I looked at similar, uh, elect, elected positions that are at the chief executives. And I looked at Teller County, and I had recalled that, at the time I researched, it changed since then, uh, county commissioners, uh, were getting paid sixty thousand a year. I think it's up to seventy-eight thousand now, now. But, so I picked sixty thousand or five thousand a month, uh, to indicate that the, the strong mayor would be acting more like a, a county commissioner, uh, and that, like in the case of Dave Paul, he can still work full-time at Park State Bank, but he still has all these county commissioner duties too, to devote to, uh, to, um, as a chief executive along with two other county commissioners. But on the other hand, I, so that's kinda how I came up with that number in consulting with other people. Uh, but, again, this is, in the, in the, this document right here, it's subject to council ordinance to change the salary if you want to. In fact, you can pay all of you if you want to. That's up to council to decide.
No, that's, no, that's charter.
Okay, that would be a charter amendment, okay. Well, the charter does say that council can do an ordinance to pay yourself, but it doesn't apply to the current council, it would be after the next election. So yes, uh, you do have that right to, to do that, and we have never done that before.
Okay, so continuing on with my list of cons. Uh, two years seems a little short for someone that's gonna sit down in a position, have to learn it, have to learn the way the city runs. That would probably take a year, pretty little bit-
A lot more. It's all, then they're, they're up for election, so you get another-
Another one in, another mayor or strong mayor in, and then they have to learn. Don't you see a little, little problem with that? You, you think the city would be more in a, in chaos as that was going on while you had your strong mayor learning the system? And, and let me, let me just read something here out of a, of a document that I found that shows the, the, the pros and cons of a strong mayor. Um, under a, actually, let me continue on here. So another thing that I was concerned, I, I think four years would be better than two years. Uh, biggest concern with having, uh, an elected official as a strong mayor would be the influence by either individuals, institutions, or political groups. Don't you, don't you see that that could cause issues there with either corruption? And let me, that brings me to this point here. Uh, "Under a strong mayor form of government, the day-to-day management of the community operations shifts to the mayor, who often lacks the appropriate training, education, and experience in a municipal administration and finance to oversee the delivery of essential community services. Also, under a strong mayor form, the temptation is strong to make decisions regarding the hiring and firing of key department head positions, such as the police chief, public works director, and finance director, based on the applicant's political support rather than his or her professional qualifications." There's other stuff in here, it talks about corruption.
Yeah, and I can address that. Okay, the whole charter and mayor process got started hun, five hundred years ago, Henry the Eighth. And he would issue charters to various cities, and usually there are cities that had the cathedrals in them. And, and all, that's how we had counselors and, and that whole form of government moved to North America, is our col, we were colonies. But when we fought the Revolutionary War, we decided we're gonna elect our city council members and our mayors. And that worked for a couple hundred years until this corruption thing that you're talking about came in with Tammany Hall back in the early nineteen hundreds. Um, and so, back then- And so, back then, there was a big, the progressive movement at the time said, "Hey, what we need to do is hire experts," okay? And Max Weber wrote the book on bureaucracies and all of this. So people said, "Hey, let's hire experts." And you just pointed out that, I mean, we may not get an expert on the subject. You might be thinking of Donald Trump or something like that. But what we do is having, have elected officials people as the executives, governors of the states, of the big cities, you know. Our democracy, and that's why this is a big principle, is that our, the person that runs the city, it's the executive, is, you can elect them or kick them out if they're not doing a job. Job. Now, when it comes to two years, that's not in here. It's not in the ballot initiative. In fact, that was, Aaron says, "We don't need to put it in there because it's already in the charter, and you're only doing changes to the charter." Okay? So, the term was taken out. That's another thing the council can do by a different charter amendment, changing the length of office. So, the question is, is does council want to address those? And I said, "You have the opportunity to address that." And all you have to do is ask Aaron to draft up an ordinance for you to consider. So if you don't want to do that, this is what you got. Assuming, I get 315 signatures on the strong mayor. We should probably be doing done in about a week.
But aren't you concerned about influence from individuals that don't even live here in this town? From institutions that are large in this town that might bring their candidate in to change the dynamics of this whole community? Are you concerned about...
Whoever has to be a resident of this city, the voting...
I'm talking influence.
Oh, influence.
Influence.
Everybody gets influenced.
Well, the city manager, the city manager right now is nonpartisan, he's not elected, he doesn't have to worry about political influence from groups, he doesn't have to worry about institutions coming in and threatening his job, saying, "Hey, if you don't do this, we're going to get enough people to get you unelected, or you're not going to win the next election." That's horrifying to think.
And we're all not party affiliated. We're doing this as unaffiliated people.
Well, then, you're...
I'm not looking for the Republicans and Democrats to put up a nominee.
But you're bringing that into the city by this. You don't realize that. You will be bringing that in here. Because there are individuals in this town that are already talking about getting their candidates in here. That right there tells me red flag, red flag.
That they are going to be unbeholden to the political party officially.
Wow.
Yeah. Okay, but no, this has been considered, and you have both forms of government. And the principle that I'm trying to live with and a whole bunch of other people is that we should hold the executive accountable to, or be accountable to the city. That's the way it was for 500 years before, you know, you had the corruption of Tammany Hall and these other things back in the early 1900s. And so there was starting to be a shift away. But now the shift is going back the other direction. It's like a pendulum swinging. And so, people are now more comfortable, and certainly, I would hope that, we're pretty intelligent voters. So if there are candidates up there, they will have to have their qualifications, they have to say, "Hey, I've run big organizations before," and things like that. But people can elect anybody they want, okay? But in two years, you could throw the crook out if he's a crook.
Right, but you missed the whole point of my statement where that individual can't be, David, the city manager right now can't be influenced by a big organization in this town. Because they can't threaten him and say, "Hey, if you don't do what we want, you'll be voted out in two years."
Well, this is not about David or...
No, it's about, it's about influence on how this town is run. That's the big picture here of a strong mayor, that Pueblo will experience, Denver will experience, and so will Colorado Springs. Just give it time. They're in the honeymoon phase right now, and I guarantee it will go that route again.
I'll stop this conversation. I think we've had enough. Bob, I appreciate you being here. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I do want to make clear that tonight is a deadline if council does want to take this strong mayor charter amendment forward, separate from the petitioning process. And so, I just, I want to make that clear. Next council meeting will be too late to have done that. I also want to read to you out of your charter compensation provision, "The members of the council shall receive such compensation, and the mayor such additional compensation as may be prescribed by referred ordinance." So yes, this changes that provision.
So silence, to me, indicates that there is not a motion on this dais tonight.
Anyone inclined to fall on Mr. Carlson's side and want to make a motion?
I have no side of this.
Please, please make sure what you're, the motion that you'd be asking for is then, it would become then a city referred ordinance, a council referred ordinance. So just, so council understands what you're asking them to consider. Correct, Mayor?
Yes, I mean, what the motion, the decision, and it need not be by motion, it can certainly be by consensus, is that you do nothing. If council, on the other hand, if there's a consensus on council's part to put on the agenda for the 21st, a first reading ordinance...
Would that give us enough time?
Then, yes, then that would be, that is the consensus. If you do that by head, out of the head, I can prepare the ordinance. It needs to be published on December 20th. It would come to council as a first reading ordinance on the 21st. Oh, excuse me, January 4th, it would come to council.
If you say it again.
If you do nothing, then the petition process moves forward.
Which means? Which means that then he's got to get sufficient signatures to bring it to the electorate.
If council wants to take it out of petitioner's hands and refer a measure, council must buy a consensus, direct that that first reading ordinance be prepared by the city attorney so that it can go to publication on December 20th.
After Johnny, did we put it on the agenda? I mean, we put it on the ballot?
Or he does.
Or obviously necessary signatures to get it on the ballot.
Right.
Mr. Carlson asked you to do this. This is not legally compelled.
Yeah.
Unlike the other ordinance, the tax ordinance, the tax question, if the petitioners are successful and can collect the requisite amount of signatures, the city charter requires that that ordinance then does come to city council. City council could decide to do nothing, or they could decide to refer that ordinance, or they could decide to refer their own ordinance. I have to double-check, I have to double-check the very last statement.
This goes back to the 410 account, Bob, because for some reason, we discussed it briefly, and moving the, basically $2 million from getting rid of the 410 account, moving it into the general, how would that keep our projects from being more scrutinized than they already are?
I read through the ballot petition issue for... Based on David and mine, it should develop.
Oh, oh, sorry. Go ahead, say that. I would do that ballot question, okay?
Okay, so...
Because council is going to take care in the next year, next year.
For capital planning?
For capital planning.
For the 410?
No, what we're proposing to do, my reason for doing that, and I've been wanting this for like six years, and that was one of the things I proposed when my farewell speech, was that we move that 1% over to the general fund. And all the reasons for it are listed in the ballot question, okay? And what primarily it does is that takes that $2 million, a little bit more, over to the general fund, so you don't, there's no cut in any, you still have the same money, but right now, the money that's in the street project should be paying for street capital improvements only, okay?
I love it.
And that's the language of the ballot question back in November 2004, 1984, okay? And that's also in this. But this would clear up that issue of how we can spend that money or not, because there's a lot to debate how we can. And if we put it all in the general fund, but there will be sufficient funds, if not this year, if we don't cut out these $1.4 million in street projects, then in subsequent years, there would be enough money to provide a property tax reduction. We can't get a property tax reduction if we cut 1% sales tax in the street fund, you could only cut sales taxes. And residents of Woodland Park pay 40% of sales taxes, Teller County pays another 40%, and the tourists that come through are paying another 20% of the sales tax. Whereas if we reduce our property taxes, which is the goal on this, is that 100% comes back to residents of Woodland Park, and it really helps the small businesses who pay three and a half times to four percent times what residents pay on the $100,000 value of their building. This would really help small businesses by cutting property taxes. But property tax is not in this, because Aaron said you can't cover two issues in the same ballot question.
Well, Aaron didn't say that. The law says that.
Well, Aaron interpreted the law. Yes, the law says that. So, so there's nothing prescribed in council how they spend that money in this ballot question, okay?
So your goal was not to reduce the amount of street projects, your goal is to give eventual, well, we'd have to increase the, obviously, I think you said 10%, so we'd have to have a million-dollar reserve for 10%, because if that money's moved over...
Well, if that money is not, if that's put in an escrow account, that's not a part of the operational budget. You don't have to put a reserve on a reserve, okay? You talked about on Tuesday night, going from 10% up to 20%.
Right.
That you could then dip into that, that kind of account.
Sure.
And we talked earlier this week, I says, "Well, why don't you put that in like an escrow account?" Because a reserve is really, should be the last resort, what you dip into. We really shouldn't have dipped into it.
And I would leave that to the expert right there.
Yeah, well, you can do it. But the point is, is that that money could go into an escrow account until council decides what they wanted to spend it on, okay?
Thanks, Bob. We had a conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Aaron?
I do just want to make one thing clear. I think the record needs to be corrected. Record is improper and irresponsible.
Hang on. There you go, I'm sorry.
I do want to make a clear record correction. I think it's improper and irresponsible to suggest that how the council and past councils have been using the 410 funds is somehow opposed to how they are allowed to use it. So I think that, the record just needs to be made clear on that point.
And one thing, Bob, you didn't mention, and a lot of people don't know this, the costs associated with a strong mayor is much higher than it is with an elected mayor. And the reason is, and I'll give you a couple of examples, our mayor in Colorado Springs makes about $105,000 or so, don't hold me to that. I know that his chief of staff makes $180,000, because he can't, to what Noel said before, manage that himself. All the staff can't do that themselves. So there's a higher cost associated. Denver's numbers are much, much higher than that. So, no, Bob, we're not going to talk about it now.
Well, I did want to...
No, we're not. I'm just, I get the last word today. But don't forget that. Don't forget that. Okay, I think we have everybody, I've got one letter to read. Mr. Rutter?
No, we still have a couple of other reports, Mayor, but at some point, you need to give your council direction on these issues, so...
No.
Do you have a consensus? Okay, it looks like we have a consensus. Yes.
Yes, yes, too. You want us to...
Put it on the ballot?
You do? On an ordinance? By ordinance? In what would be your reasoning, I want to hear.
I'd like to evaluate, do a lot of research. And I also like to... But without that information, why would you want to put it on the ballot?
Want us to put it on the ballot?
Us to put it on the ballot.
With the time constraint of the 21st of December. But if there is a true grassroots support for this initiative, then Mr. Carlson will get his signatures, and it will go on the ballot. He's asking us to take it up as an ordinance on first posting on the 21st, and then vote on it, I assume in December, which would preclude his petition campaign. I say let Mr. Carlson do his petition campaign and see if the support is there, and we'll have time then to study the issue ourselves. But I'd like to hear your opinion, and I'm glad you provided it.
I understand. Bob, it's really hard to... And at that time, I think we would all like to have more information, so we can all make an educated decision, as through the electorate, because I don't know that they're very educated on SICR or not. So, that'll be up to Bob, get those signatures, and then gather as much information as we can.
Thank you.
As I said, are we where we need to be?
Yes, sir. Suzanne, you had one more issue?
Yes, thank you, David. I just wanted to update the council, that you'll be happy to hear that the Personnel Board met for the first time yesterday afternoon. They've appointed a chairperson of the committee as secretary, and they're working on some procedures and policies for that committee. They're going to meet again in January.
They have any...
They do not, but they're going to set everything up in case we ever need it.
And Ben's going to give a quick update on the Majestic Parkway drainage issues.
We're actually falling off the edge. Go ahead.
As I was saying, as we promised, we're going forward on addressing the residents' concerns of Paradise Estates. The Lower Pond adjacent to Paradise Circle and Majestic, we removed 90 tons, about 60 cubic yards of sediment in that, so basically restored it to the original design intent. As far as the reports and the construction documents, still going through boxes of record information for that development in the top of Paradise, and still continuing to work with the owners of those areas that have some erosion issues.
Great work. Any feedback on the residents?
Not yet, not yet. We just finished that up a few days ago when we stabilized the some erosion.
Yeah, as a resident, thank you, but I had no erosion issues.
Couple of other things very quickly. Also letting council know that we have fulfilled one of the promises we made to the community about sweeping Highway 24 in the wintertime. Recall that we wanted to do that to reduce the amount of buildup in the curb and gutters. We did that on Monday, and we will continue to do that through the course of the winter. And lastly, let's just remember that today is Pearl...
And lastly, let's just remember that today is Pearl Harbor Day, and 76 years ago, it changed the course of our country forever, and we should remember those over 2,000 servicemen that lost their lives in that very first day of World War II for us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So the last five years, my mother, my mom works for United Airlines, and for the last, I'd say possibly 10 years, she has escorted a gentleman that was at Pearl Harbor on one of the ships, I'm not sure which one it was, from Houston to Honolulu. In fact, she just did this two days ago. She wrote a speech that she gave on the airplane to talk about Gilbert and what he had done. She read it to me, and I cried. The one thing that I didn't realize that Gilbert had done is he was on one of the ships, he was actually sleeping, and it got bombed, and it started to keel over, and he got out of one of the portals, and he just, he jumped into the water, and then he somehow got onto shore and survived. He enlisted five more times. His biggest thing that she read in this letter was that he was actually at the signing at, I believe it was Tokyo, where the Imperial Fleet Commander had signed the document to surrender. He was on the ship in the stands, or there when that was signed. And I could not, I mean, when I heard that, this guy to me is a legend. And I think this is his last trip because he's 84, 85, he's very old, but I could... I will probably get that from my mom, and maybe I can distribute it out to the council members, and I'll send it to Dave, and I'll send some pictures. But Gilbert is an amazing man, he has a little crush on my mom. But she read it to me, and she read it to the people on the plane because she's the working flight attendant, and it wowed, and people just came up to first class, and this is every year. Last year was even better, they had a band when he got on the plane, they had, but he's one of the remaining four or five peoples.
There's about 1,000 survivors still, there's four...
Okay, well, I'm not sure of those numbers.
From Pearl Harbor.
But it was pretty amazing. So I'll get that from my mom and send it out. But amazing man, amazing man. And the fact that he re-enlisted five more times after that, so...
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.